I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Want to welcome you and the attendance as well as those that might listen to the audio at a later time to tonight's city council meeting. Next we have the consent agenda, there are items that need to be pulled. If not, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilman Quavel?
Aye.
Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next we have a present, a public hearing on the CDBG Annual Action Plan for Fiscal 2015-2016. Mr. Allen.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibits to enter into the record. Exhibit number one, public notice is advertised in the Blue Springs Examiner dated July 25, 2015. Public comments received, city council information form from Scott Allen, Director of Community Development, with proposed resolution, and 2015-2016 Annual Action Plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay. Ms. Allen, you're up.
Thank you, Honor and Councilman. Again, before you this evening is the draft Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2015-2016 for community development block grant funds. As you know, we've, we've had several presentations, discussions before you prior to this. In fact, we've had three back in May and two in June. After that June 15 city council meeting, we went to the public comment period, 30-day public comment period, which ended July 20th. We did include the formal emailed and written public comments that we did receive. We did receive a handful of those, which were included in your packet. Certainly go over those if you'd like. But again, before you, this evening is the draft plan to utilize approximately $217,802 for this next fiscal year. And we've laid out six different programs and projects based on feedback and discussion up to this point for your consideration. Again, the annual action plan does need to be submitted to Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD by August 15th in order to meet their deadlines, in order to secure that funding for this next fiscal year. Again, the six projects that are laid out before you, a couple of programs that we've had for a few years and a newer one. We have the Minor Home Repair Program, proposed to be $60,000 of the total, which at, up to $5,000 each could provide approximately 12,000, excuse me, 12 different property owners with assistance with minor home repairs. We also have $39,000 slated for First Time Home Buyers Program, that at three, up to $3,000 each, again, doing that math, can assist up to 13 new home buyers here in the city. Also have the Downtown Facade Grant Program slated for $20,000 plus approximate $10,000 in carryover funds would bring that total program to approximately $30,000. We're looking at increasing that level of funding per application up to $5,000 each, which would again allow for about six different facade grants. We also have Downtown Live, looking at $10,000, which is consistent with their funding assistance and requests over the last few years. And we have two newer projects, Summit Street Sidewalks, looking at Phase One of four phases at $40,000. And finally, property acquisition demolition. That's kind of the balance, $48,000 and some change, looking to acquire property that's deemed slum or blighted in a designated area, which, as we have now in the downtown area, the MCRC boundaries, Main Center Redevelopment Corporation boundaries, do qualify as a blighted area based on that blight study. And so, we would recommend $40,000 or so of the $217,000 to go towards that new program. So with that, again, looking for a favorable recommendation and adoption of the draft Annual Action Plan this evening so we can meet the HUD mandated deadline of August 15th. Now I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions of Ms. Allen from the council? Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? To close this public hearing? Accept a motion to adopt a resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Yes, Councilman Edmondson?
Just an interesting comment I heard today, that statistics show that 60% of millennials are looking to purchase now as opposed to rent, which is kind of a turnaround. So it's nice to see that, that we're still doing that first time home buyers because if you're going renting and now all of a sudden now we're looking to purchase, what a better area than Blue Springs to come out and purchase and then we offer first time home buyers. So I think this is really good to have that in place.
You did say millennials?
Millennials, yes.
Okay, good. All right. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same saying, motion carries. Next we have a public hearing on the Unified Development Code Amendments.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council Information Form with Attachment, which includes Planning Commission Memorandum dated July 27, 2015, table outlining substantial public works municipal code changes, affidavit of publication is advertised in the Blue Springs Examiner on July 11, 2015, presentation to the Unified Development Code update as presented to the Planning Commission on July 27, 2015, proposed ordinance with amended Unified Development Code and Design and Construction Manual dated July 24, 2015, and as attached Exhibits A and B respectively. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Ms. Allen.
Thank you, Honor and Councilman. I am very pleased to present to you this evening the new Unified Development Code. It's gone through a lot of different channels and reviews and drafts up to this point. And here we are, first meeting August, looking to move forward with our new UDC. So welcome to new UDC. You may have seen this PowerPoint presentation in your packet. I updated a couple of the images in the slides, so that was really about it. That will be different from that. Again, this is entirely new addition of the UDC. The focus is on simplifying the development approval processes. Again, it was kind of the charge to staff, therefore to the consultant, to look at combining some development processes, providing more of a menu of design options. And we kind of came up with this tagline on the fly, "You meet it, you build it." It's kind of our, our mantra for the code. We've put a lot more detail in the, this new edition of the UDC that was previously left up to, you know, I guess, more subjective review through various boards and commissions, and put that more in a specific guideline fashion here in the UDC with more images and such as you saw, to allow developers to come forward, read through the code. If you meet it, you go to building permit and move on. This is really a companion piece to the comprehensive plan, and so doing it emphasizes places and spaces. So not as much the kind of hard and fast parcel lines, zoning district lines, those are all there, but it really is looking to be more, have a, again, a community guide to improving places and spaces throughout the city. So we'll just tour some of the changes. The first few sections are more administrative in nature. We have the general provisions right up front, updated some of the dates, grandfathering current developments. So those are under construction, are still adhering to the current standards. Try to improve consistency of terminology, so we're all using the same type of language. And then Section 402 is looking at the Review and Decision Making Bodies. Not much has been updated here. We are proposing to add, based on a lot of feedback up to this point, Historic Preservation Commission Member to the Downtown Review Board. There are nine members on Downtown Review Board, and a lot of emphasis again on downtown property owners, business owners and such. And with the, the new Historical Resources Survey two years ago, it seemed prudent to consider a Historic Preservation Commission Member to be included in that because of the expanded, I guess, areas that were reviewed with that survey. Also included language regarding conservation districts, which you'll hear more about here next month, as we look forward to moving forward more specifically with conservation districts throughout the downtown area. Similar major areas of change, wanted to emphasize. Section 403 is the Development Review Procedures. As you're seeing, the labeling is still very similar. So I call this a new addition to the UDC. It's not a, it is a, I guess, a full rewrite technically, but it is not really going away from the same type of, you know, Section 403.040, kind of what you're used to seeing in staff reports and application forms. Again, zoning districts, things of that sort. We're not modifying anyone's zoning, not rezoning any property, again, not changing a lot of the, kind of the section numbers per se, just really consolidated and cleaning up a lot of what we already had out there. So this is a large-scale reorganization, try to condense and, I guess, consolidate development review procedures. We have a procedure summary, if you're able to see that right at the front of Section 403. There's a table that lays out, hopefully a little bit more clearly, process to go through with each different approval. So it's a little bit more of a, it's a chart, but it's kind of a, kind of a decision tree almost, or a flow chart to follow. Moving away from the acronyms of PUDs and PROs, Planning Developments, Planned Residential Overlay, Districts, so on and so forth, and really consolidating things into Planned Developments. I suppose we'll still come up with the acronym of PDs, but anyway, we do have Planned Developments, which will be residential in nature and also non-residential in nature. So really, again, instead of having so many different versions and layers, we've, we've kind of compressed everything into these Planned Developments. Site Plan and Design Review, there are new thresholds, and this is an important one to take note of. We got a lot of feedback in terms of the minimums to go forward with a Site Plan and Design Review application at Planning Commission was quite low. Currently, in the current code, it is 750 square feet, so anything larger than that needs to go through Site Plan and Design Review. So that could be, well, pretty much everything. There's very little that is less than that. We are, I think, the Scooters Coffee Building on Seven Highway is maybe less than that, but that's really about it. And this is a big jump, 750 to now 25,000. That's quite a big jump, but the point there is, all the standards have been specifically identified in the code, that Planning Commission, for example, would be reviewing and, you know, processing anyway, and therefore anybody under that threshold would be able to just meet the code, again, the "you meet it, you build it." One example we gave to the Planning Commission last week was the Walnut Street Business Center. If everybody's familiar with where Excelligent is now, off Walnut, west of Amos River Parkway or by Dravet. That is 28,000 square feet. So kind of keeping that in mind, it was three suites for kind of light industrial, commercial buildings. That would still need to go through a Site Plan and Design Review, but just kind of picturing that, you know, something slightly smaller than that would just have to meet the code standards, would not have to go to Planning Commission. So up to this point, again, Steering Committee, Development Advisory Commission, and Planning Commission have all been supportive of this threshold. In fact, we heard from a few builders, that's still too small. So, again, that's just a procedural-type thing, but we can talk more about that if you'd like. Reasonable accommodations, city attorney, Nancy Endes, provided this, so it were consistent with ADA and other accessibility matters as relates to the UDC. Section 404, and I'll show a chart here in a moment, Zoning District Regulations. Like I said, we're not changing anybody's zoning, we are adding two new zoning districts as options, really emphasizing that mixed-use concept that's stressed in the comprehensive plan, the NL and NO, and I'll talk about those in a minute. PRO, that Planned Residential Overlay has been merged into more of just generic RO. So you may have seen the PRO information in the code, but it's really a more of a historical reference to those that are currently zoned that. So here the NL and NO, these are mixed-density neighborhoods, neighborhood limited and neighborhood open. And this is, again, kind of like what we have with the process tree. This is broken down by development type, so building type, and what types of buildings can be placed and which zoning districts, really referencing and echoing what is in the Downtown Development Code, kind of form-based approach. The idea here is to provide more options for mixed-use zoning rather than trying to break up a project into, you know, three or four different zoning districts, actually choose an NL or NO and be able to build that kind of mixed-use approach without, again, having different islands of zoning throughout. Moving forward, Section 405 are the Building and Use Regulations. So as I mentioned just a minute ago on that chart, we have different building types, residential, non-residential. We have permitted types table with images, I'll show some of those here in a moment. Again, we have residential and non-residential, minimum and maximum standards for each building type and each type of use. We've really kind of distinguished a little bit better between accessory and temporary uses, really seen a lot more of those temporary uses coming forward that we previously were not, I guess, seeing in the, in the mid 1990s, where we talk about circuses and such. We don't have many circuses that come to town, so we'd be a little bit more, a little bit more inclusive in terms of special events and such with temporary uses, for example. We also are looking to include accessory dwelling units in single-family residential areas. This is not just in direct response to the tiny house movement, but looking at taking that kind of in-law suite that may be attached to your house, which personally I have at my house, and allowing it as a detached unit. We're seeing some of that happening anyway, you know, being a apartment or suite over a garage, detached garage, but without the kitchen facilities, and this really allows for more of a full-service type approach for, again, for kind of mixed generations, multi-generational living on one property. So it's response to that as well as the tiny house movement. And the Use Table, Use Table has changed, hopefully a little bit more easy to follow, easy to read. We have different symbols for permitted, conditional, limited uses and such, and broken down by different use types, a little bit more specifically than we have currently. So just walk through some of the images that you saw in the, in the UDC. Here are some residential building types. I won't go through all those, but just, again, just a sampling, not saying this is exactly what, if you want a row house, it needs to look like that, it's just, you know, kind of how does it lay out on a property? That's the intent of these images. And again, these are things that can change if need be, but again, just give a little bit better visual concept to the text that we have in the code. Here are the non-residential building types, very similar again. And moving forward, 406, we're almost there. We have two more after this, or three more, excuse me. Subdivision Design Improvements, this is really a full rewrite. This is a lot of help and guidance from Public Works Department, so appreciate Mr. Sandy and his staff, all the hard work they put into putting this together. It's to tie in with the new Public Works Design and Construction Manual, which is also before you this evening separately, but again, connected with the UDC. The idea is to take a lot of those specifics out, put it into more of a manual form, kind of a easy-to-read, functional-type approach, and less, you know, burdensome, kind of piece by piece in the UDC. So kind of creating an adjunct manual to go along with the UDC, at least subdivision portion of it. In there, there are alternative design materials usage, information on that. Mr. Sandy, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that part of it. And we have a couple new, again, menu. I talked about consolidation, excuse me, I also talked about menus. The idea here is to provide more of a menu to developers for different items rather than just the, here's, here are the plant units you need, and just get that number in your, in your development, and we'll call it good. And then you start bartering back and forth as to where they should go, what they should look like, exactly what space that should be, how it ties into other things. And the idea here is provide more options upfront, so that developers can just take those pieces, put it into their development proposal, and just move forward in that "you meet it, you build it" concept. Here are some street types that are referenced, these are less common natural activity, these are the more common ones that we'll be seeing. Again, just images just for reference, but really it's identified more specifically in the Design and Construction Manual. Talk about those open space types, here, here are the ones that we've identified in the code, eight different ones with, again, some parameters for each of those. So when open space is required or proposed, these are the different options they can be looking at. Again, all very common to what we see now, but again, providing more of that menu, so developers aren't just left guessing, saying, "Well, does the city want a trail, or do they want a plaza? What if we put a community garden in? What will that do?" It gives them more of a, again, prescription for each of those to follow. Moving on, 407, the General Development Standards, this is a big piece. We have access types, again, more of that menu concept, same with frontage types. We revised landscape design standards, hopefully to be a little bit more straightforward, user-friendly, a lot of different options again, not just numbers, but a little more context for each of the options. And we've identified residential design standards as well. Nothing really onerous, just actually identifying something. To this point, we've had nothing in the UDC. We have non-residential design parameters, but nothing for residential design. These are just some different access types in residential nature, new terminology perhaps, but again, still in keeping with what we're seeing out there, just again, different options for how properties can lay out, and again, dimensions that go with that. Frontage types, this is, this is a new approach, this is kind of ties in with an open space with, with the landscaping. You know, up to this point, we have, "You need X number of plant units, 400 plant units for such and such development." Well, okay, then we start having this, again, back and forth, well, where should they go? What types should they be? It goes to Planning Commission, they have their input, perhaps they need to redesign something, left with a lot of questions, what are we actually going to see in the end? The idea here is to be a little bit more structured in with, with what can be provided. You've probably seen a lot of these things out there. Yards and setbacks, for example, is more of a residential. Frontage Plaza is more commercial, same with enhanced street skate frontage. Those are the ones that you'll most likely be seeing come forward of those first two. Again, some other changes, 408 and 411. 408 is supplemental standards, reorganization of all those add-on standards, we have micro wind turbines, cell towers, floodplains. Section 411 was our definitions only, now it's kind of all-inclusive of interpretations. We have a glossary that's broken down by type, use type, and we also have interpretation dimensional standards, meaning when we talk about side yard setback, where is that, what does that actually mean? So a lot more consistency with that rather than just kind of left guessing case-by-case basis. What we're doing now, as you saw here, we've finalized essentially all the illustrations, we're just cleaning up some headers, pagination, kind of formatting and such, that's all that's left. As you saw, what was presented for you tonight, it doesn't have a table contents or a title page, those are the things that we're wrapping up as we speak. So those are just some minor items that we can tack on later. And here's that final schedule. So we've gone through Steering Committee review, moving forward to Development Advisory Commission review, they recommended approval for you this evening, same with Planning Commission last week. And here we are tonight, August 3rd, with the current public hearing and recommendation for adoption. Over the next two months, this is where we actually start hitting the ground, again, assuming positive response tonight, we'll be going forward to boards and commissions, development customers, and doing some training, doing kind of education information campaign. So we're working with our public information folks in the city to put together some materials, we're already working on the new application forms and such, new brochures, so going to be a lot of steep learning curve for everybody. A lot of our staff, frontline staff, have already been using the code. We've had pre-application meetings with current, with upcoming projects, and our staff has actually been reviewing them under both the current code and the new code. So providing both approaches, we'll be doing that for the next two months under this proposal. So with that, we looked at, well, the, start of the fiscal year, sounds as good as any to start launching the new code. However, October 1st is a Thursday, October 2nd is an application deadline. So we figured, well, like today, the first Monday of the month, then perhaps is a, is a better time to look at that. So October 2nd, we will be taking applications under the current standards all the way up through that October 2nd deadline. October 5th then is the Monday, and that's when we propose the new UDC goes into effect. Along with that, as you know, we've been talking about the comprehensive plan, that was essentially recommended for adoption, or adopted, I should say, by the Planning Commission last summer, but was not technically effective until the UDC goes into effect. So both of those on October 5th would be effective and utilized at that time. So again, there's a lot of crossover between the comprehensive plan, the new UDC, merging into as well the Design and Construction Manual. And just need to thank city attorney Endes and Mr. Sandy, and certainly Mr. Holly, for overseeing all this, for all the help and work throughout all this. Again, also, all the Steering Committee members and Development Advisory Commission members, Planning Commission, all the folks have had their hand in this. It's been a long time coming and a lot of work to put this together, but a 19-year-old code that's been kind of put together with bits and pieces over the last 10-plus years, took a lot of work to kind of dig that out and rebuild it and make it fresh and new. So here we are before you this evening. I should also mention there at the end, we are looking to go back every, probably the first time, within the first six months, but at least once a year, go through this kind of trial and error with a lot of this, I'm sure, see what's working, what isn't, what we still need to add. There are a number of things that we are still considering, such as, you know, green energy standards, we have that for micro wind turbines, but we don't for solar, for example. Again, not something where it's mandated, but if you were to choose to have solar in your house, you know, where would it go? How large, you know, how reflective, you know, how does it impact your neighbors? That's really what we're looking at. So things like that will still be under, under discussion and will be hopefully coming forward to you in the next six months. So with that, just now seven o'clock, not quite, I'll stand for any questions.
You did well. Any, Councilman Levy?
Just a quick question, you said the staff's already kind of been implementing this. Has it been having its desired effect as far as simplicity and all that? Are you still kind of working out the bugs? Are you seeing the benefits of the new UDC as you were expecting?
Yes, to all of the above.
Okay.
But to be more specific, we had a pre-application meeting with a proposed retailer on an infill lot, and they are going to move forward as it stands with the current code, I think because it's a tight fit for them anyway. Parking and such, not an issue. I think some of the landscaping buffers seem to be, I'd say have more of a challenge, but I think was going to be, it would take a little bit more forethought to put that together, let's say. So it was just for them easier to deal with the number count of plant units than to actually start figuring out, well, is the buffer the best place to put it along Seven Highway, for example, or should be putting on the entranceway? And it was just, you know, a bit much than, more than what they were expecting at the moment. So I think if they had the code upfront, they would have been able to make it work, let's say. Not unworkable, just for them, a little bit less desirable.
Well, yeah, I know a lot of work went into this, so congratulations on getting across the finish line.
Thank you.
Councilman Carter?
I just want to say this was a tedious process. I ran on this five and a half years ago to update our comprehensive plan and the UDC, just thinking that we would update it, and as we got deeper and deeper into it, it became scrap it and start over again. And they say, "Be careful what you wish for, you might have to be involved in it." And I was on the Steering Committee for both. And just hats off to staff for all of their work on this thing. I think we have documents that are going to make us easier to do business in, easier to develop in, and just, just make us more competitive within our region. So congratulations, Scott, and the rest of the staff, you did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? This certainly will help, the one and done.
Yes, that was very much in our, in our sights the whole time, absolutely. That was where we came up with the, the catchphrase, "You meet it, you build it." So we'll, we're going to put that to the test. That's what I said over the next- As I said, over the next six months, we'll see trial and error, exactly how well that's going to work.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing now, let's go to public. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Next, I would entertain a motion to introduce, who wants to first to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, John.
All right.
First reading of bill number 4385, an ordinance amending the city of Blue Springs Unified Development Code by repealing chapters 401, 402, 403, 404, 405, 406, 407, 408, 409, 410, and 411 in their entirety, and enacting in lieu thereof new chapters 401, 402, 403, 404, 405, 406, 407, 408, and 411, and to adopt a design and construction manual to be used in development.
Will the bill be approved on first reading? Proceed to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4385, an ordinance amending the city of Blue Springs Unified Development Code by repealing chapters 401, 402, 403, 404, 405, 406, 407, 408, 409, 410, and 411 in their entirety, and enacting in lieu thereof new chapters 401, 402, 403, 404, 405, 406, 407, 408, and 411, and to adopt a design and construction manual to be used in development.
That was pragmatic.
It puts you to sleep.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levissay?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4558.
Again, great job by all those involved in making this happen. Next, we have introduction, ring of bill 4386.
I'll introduce it.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4386, an ordinance amending the city of Blue Springs City Code as it relates to the Public Works Department and performance of its duties, public infrastructure as it relates to development, to incorporate use of a design and construction manual to modernize the code's provisions with respect to public infrastructure.
Move the bill be approved on first reading? Proceed to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4386, an ordinance amending the city of Blue Springs City Code as it relates to the Public Works Department and performance of its duties, public infrastructure as it relates to development, to incorporate use of a design and construction manual to modernize the code's provisions with respect to public infrastructure.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levissay?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4559.
Next, we have introduction, ring of bill 4387.
I'll introduce it, John. First reading of bill number 4387, an ordinance amending chapter 390, street fairs, exhibitions, concerts, and chapter 600, alcoholic beverages of the city code, of the code of the ordinances of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, as same relate to Fall Fun Festival and definitions for chapter 600.
Move the bill be approved on first reading and proceed to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4388, an ordinance amending article 2 of chapter 610, miscellaneous business regulations of the code of ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri, relating to mobile food truck vendors.
Move the bill be approved on first reading? Proceed to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4388, an ordinance amending article 2 of chapter 610, miscellaneous business regulations of the code of ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri, relating to mobile food truck vendors.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levissay?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4561.
That brings us to Merrill announcements, I'm going to go straight to Thostapunda. It's about Thomas Jefferson. "My reading of history convinces me that most bad government results from too much government," end quote. Now, there are about seven people in this room, last Thursday evening, attended an evening of excellence award dinner by the Missouri Main Street, of which there are some accolades that came out at the meeting. First and foremost, uh, some of you met Norma Ramirez de Mies, uh, who is the national person from Main Street that was in attendance. And, you know, when they came here, for those that participated in it, they were doing some assessments and evaluations, and she announced at that meeting that we're now associate members, Downtown Alive has reached that status, which is an accomplishment. There were some, uh, milestones and some, uh, uh, what, what word am I looking for? Some benchmarks, that's a good word, some benchmarks at that meeting, uh, that she wanted us to achieve. When I say us, I'm talking collectively. Uh, I think there were about six of them or something, and I knew we could do it. We did it. So we're associate members. But more so, uh, there was, uh, an award we received called Streetscape and Public Improvement Projects, and the recipients were the Chamber of Commerce, the Blue Springs Downtown Alive, and the city of Blue Springs. And somehow, I was, uh, nominated and I was a semifinalist for, uh, Public Official of the Year. And so I got a certificate on it, another person actually got the award, but just being nominated and become a semifinalist was quite an honor. So that being said, I am going to yield to Councilman Susan Culpepper.
Well, Your Honor, I just wanted to, uh, say we were very, very excited. Downtown Alive was very excited, uh, the city and the chamber, um, it was a wonderful partnership between the three, and all three received an award, and I had the pleasure of accepting it for the city, and so I would like to give this to you so it can be proudly displayed at City Hall.
Thank you so much. And also Downtown Alive and the chambers recognize, once you all stand too, because it was all the team effort, we couldn't accomplish it without the team. Y'all stand up.
That's right.
Stand up. Let's go. I'm going to give this to Cheryl for her to properly display it someplace.
Way to go, Cheryl.
Well, I think we need a trophy case at the New City Hall, we're doing so well.
New City Hall?
Oh, the New City Hall.
Oh!
Snuck that in there, didn't you?
You let the cat out of the bag.
What's that budget, Eric?
New City Hall.
Well, ironic.
Yeah, where's that budget item?
Unless they pick it up on audio at a later time. I don't think there's any press represented tonight, so.
It's right out here on the square.
Yeah. Maybe at the public safety bill someplace, we'll, we'll display it someplace, where it'd be prominently displayed.
We're out of wall space, so.
Yeah, I don't have any wall space left. I'm trying to figure out where I'm going to put that certificate I just got. But anyway, um, that's all that I have, and I don't have any visitors, forms of anyone that'd like to address the mayor and the council. So I would, I'm going to, uh, recognize our city attorney, who will propose a motion, and all you have to do is say, "I so moved." So, Ms. Endis.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, the appropriate motion would be to move that this body go into closed session pursuant to section 610.021, sub-paragraph 1 of the revised statutes of Missouri, for the purpose of having confidential and privileged communications between a governmental body or its representatives and its attorney relating to legal action, causes of action,